I look forward to it every week.
All right. Good evening. I'd like to call together, call to order this order, this call to order, this meeting is the September 19th, 2024 City of Nashua Planning Board Meeting. First matter, roll call. Anki is not here. Is member of staff able to do the roll call this evening?
Sure.
Thank you. Mayor Donches, Chair Ballinger.
Here.
Vice Chair Varley.
Here.
Alderman Klee.
Here.
Member Hirsch.
Here.
Engineer Hudson.
Here.
Member Harper, Member Leclair, Member Green, who's expected to be here, but might be just running. Here he is now.
Parking is kind of tough.
Oh, right. We have meetings downstairs, a couple of them. And Member Green.
Here.
Here.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. We have a quorum. Next item on the agenda, approval of minutes from the September 5th, 2024 meeting. Has any member of the board had an opportunity to review those minutes and is willing to make a recommendation on their acceptance? Mr. Hirsch?
Move to accept a minute.
Motion by Mr. Hirsch to accept. Is there a second?
I will.
Alderman Klee, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item on the agenda, communications. Scott, any additional materials come in since we've received our packets?
Yes, A240151, Five Morse Avenue. There are, there's an updated staff report with the complete waiver list, and I believe Dan had a few minor site plan amendments that would be added to the next version of the plan. But you have the second most updated version of the plan tonight.
Okay. All right. And the staff report, the link, the current hyperlink is the most recent?
Yes.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Everything's loaded up.
All right. Next item on the agenda, report of Chair, Chairman, Committee, and Liaison. Ms. Harper is not here. Ever I would like to take a moment to acknowledge Mr. Hudson. Last week, he was acknowledged by the American Public Works Association. He received the Professional Manager of the Year Award in the Engineer and Technology category. So I think it just goes to show the level of staff that we have here in the city. So congratulations, Dan. Well deserved.
Much appreciated.
All right. Before we start hearing our cases, I would like to read the planning board procedure. The procedure of the meeting and the hearing are as follows. After the legal notice of each conditional special use permit, site plan, or subdivision plan is read by the chair, the board will determine if the application is complete and ready for the board to take jurisdiction. The public hearing will begin, at which time the applicant or representative will be given time to present an overview and description of their project. They shall speak to whether or not they agree with the stipulations recommended by staff. The board will have an opportunity to ask relevant follow-up questions of the applicant or staff. The chair will then ask for testimony from the audience, and the chair shall have the ability to limit the length of public testimony in the interest of time. First, anyone wishing to speak in opposition or concerned of the plan may speak. Please come forward to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. This will be the time to express your concerns or ask questions you may have regarding the plan. Next, testimony will come from anyone wishing to speak in favor of the plan. The board may then ask relevant follow-up questions of the applicant. The applicant will then be given a rebuttal period, at which time they shall respond to any concerns raised by prior public testimony. After this is completed, the board hearing will end, and the board will begin the public meeting, at which time the board will deliberate and vote on the application before us. We ask that both sides keep their remarks, remarks to the subject at hand and not to repeat what has already been said. We want to be fair to everyone and make the best possible decision based on the testimony presented and considering all applicable approval criteria established in the Nashua Revised Ordinances. Thank you for your interest and your courteous attention. I would ask that you turn off your cell phones or set them to vibrate at this time. Thank you. And before we call our first case, I would like to stipulate that I will be recusing from case A24-0138, and Mr. Varley will be assuming chair duties.
As Mr. Ballinger said, I am going to assume the chair duties for this next case, which is new business site plans A24-0138, EC New Hampshire Real Estate Holdings, Inc., owner, with a proposed modification to a condition of a previously approved conditional use permit. His property is located at 310 Daniel Webster Highway, at the Pheasant Lane Mall, in his own general business and transit-oriented development in Ward 7. This case had been postponed from a prior meeting to this evening. So as to case number A24-0138, can I have a motion? This application is complete and ready for the board to accept jurisdiction.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Klee. Is there a second? Second, Mr. Hudson. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed. That motion passes.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is Morgan Hollis. I'm an attorney with Gottesman &amp; Hollis at 39 East Pearl Street in Nashua, and I'm here representing EC New Hampshire Real Estate Holdings, Inc., with regard to its property at 310 Daniel Webster Highway, which is specifically the former Sears retail building. And just to rehash, I wrote a letter to the board on June 28th, but it's been some time, so I'm just going to refresh everybody's recollection, including mine. But on September 7th of 2023, the City Planning Board approved a conditional use permit to allow a casino gaming facility in the former Sears retail space. The approval contained a number of conditions, but number one condition was, prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, the applicant shall reconstruct the Pheasant Lane-Daniel Webster Highway intersection, specifically at the corner with the Zimmerman Skis, Boards, and More Business, as detailed in the attached memo from Wayne Husband, Senior Traffic Engineer, dated July 7th, 2023, as modified by Wayne Husband. Since September 7th, my client's been working with the traffic engineer, the city engineering department, the owner of the real estate, which is identified as Pheasant Lane. That happens to be May Apartment Stores. Those of you unfamiliar with the layout of the mall, each of the main stores owns their building, and then they have this little tail that comes out and gives them frontage. And it happens to be that Pheasant Lane is the frontage piece for May Apartment Stores, formerly Macy's, or known as Macy's. And we've also been working with the owner of the Common Areas out there, which controls under the reciprocal agreement that all parties have joined in, reciprocal easement agreement, and that's Simon. And they control what goes on on the common road ways that service the mall. And then finally, we've been working closely with the owners and operators of Zimmerman's. We've done a lot of surveying. The traffic engineer has surveyed all of Zimmerman's parcel and all of the area around Pheasant Lane, which is a private way, and the intersection as well of Daniel Webster Highway, to make sure we understand what's out there. They've come up with a specific traffic plan, how that intersection will be reconstructed. That plan has been presented to the city engineer, and that plan has been essentially approved by the city engineering department. We've also continued to work with Zimmerman's because the change in the intersection, which, by the way, the city has desired and wanted for years and years. Those of you who may not know, there've been multiple parties that have attempted to work this out, and it hasn't happened. And we're finally there where we're going to reconstruct this, this intersection. We've been working with Zimmerman's because the, they are the most adversely impacted. Obviously, the city as a whole will be favorably impacted, but Zimmerman's will be adversely impacted by any change, as you know, that goes on at any intersection. Currently, Zimmerman's has their own lighted exit from their store into the intersection, and that adds an additional cycle onto the entire light cycling. As a result, that intersection is burdened like no other intersection. By making some changes in the design of the intersection, which also require changes to the entrance and exit of Zimmerman's, we're going to modify and improve the traffic flow of that intersection and change the level of service of that intersection. While it's related to our use, our use will have minimal impact on that intersection, but we've agreed as a condition that we will fix it. What's happened is, it's taken so long to get to where we are, and we haven't finalized this. We're continuing to work with Zimmerman's. We've even today come up with, in the last few days, a revised plan, but we're going to continue to work with them to tweak it as much as we can to make their site as, as positive as possible. We then have to work with, now that we know what we're asking and what we're going to do, we have to work with Target, Macy's, and Simon to get the proper easements, get the legal documentation done, and then perform the construction. Under the current condition, it all had to be done before the opening. And in discussions with the city engineer and with the city traffic engineer, they've agreed that it would make sense to not do the construction now. This is the busiest time for Zimmerman's. If we're in there doing construction, all it does is shut their business off. Also, we've been in discussions with Simon, and they would prefer we not do the construction now. So rather than rush everything, get all the approvals, get out there and do the construction during the busiest time of that intersection, we are proposing to do it next year. And with staff's support, the traffic engineer and the city engineer's support, we are asking this board to allow us to amend that condition so that it doesn't have to be done before the CFO is issued. It can be done after the CFO, but we have to bond for that improvement. As I say, it's projected to do probably following April 1 of next year, and we would bond for the cost of the construction of those improvements, which have now been vetted and approved by the traffic engineering department. So the anticipated opening date is somewhere between the very end of December and, say, February or March. Just remains to be seen at this time, but for, for sake of discussion, just in case they're, move the process up, I would say the end of December. But that's it in a nutshell. I believe Dan can speak to it, but if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer. Also, we have our traffic engineer. If you want to get into the nitty-gritty details of the design, but the improvements are, there'll be some exit coming out of Zimmerman's onto Pheasant Lane. The entrance into Zimmerman's, entrance and exit into Zimmerman's, which is right near the intersection, will be slid to the south, and then there'll be modifications within the Zimmerman parking lot. We also have to modify the traffic signal. That's a pretty significant cost and improvement. All of those lanes of traffic on the right-hand side, as you approach that intersection going north, will be moved northerly, so they will be at the actual intersection. Are there any questions? Happy to answer them. And as I say, traffic engineer, our traffic engineer is here this evening.
Any questions from the board?
Not a question, more a statement. Attorney Hollis presented the, presented the status very well. Fixing this intersection has been on senior engineer's husband's list, to-do list, priority list for a very long time. So, but it's been hard to do, as was noted, given all the parties involved. All those mall properties come out with little fingers and touch DW Highway, and so getting all the right people on board to make this change has been challenging. But we really appreciate the efforts that have been made to do so. For us, it's less important about the exact timing when this happens, just that, in fact, it does happen. And so we don't, we have no objection to, you know, extending a year and having that bonded and, and change the condition of approval. So that's extended out and happens within the next year. No problem with that at all. And, and really, really do appreciate all the flexibility and work that's gone into it. Zimmerman's, they've been involved throughout the process, and there's been a bunch of back and forth. And we're finally to a point, I think, that we have a plan that everybody agrees to and that can move forward. So really excited about that and getting this, what is a pretty significant safety concern at that intersection addressed once and for all. So thank, thank you, everyone, for all your efforts on that.
That's great. I mean, it sounds to me like it's a pretty significant improvement for the city, and everybody's worked collaboratively, it sounds like, to get this done in a way that makes sense. So I don't have any questions. Yeah, I'm not. Do any other board members have any questions? Okay. Is there anyone that's here in the audience tonight that's interested in speaking in opposition or concern to the plan that's before us? Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor of the plan? Not seeing anyone. Does staff have anything to add at this time?
Nope. That was an accurate summary.
Great. Any other questions from the board, or, all right? Nothing that the applicant wants to add, I'm assuming?
No, we agree with staff recommendation as the language.
Great. Thank you. All right. With that, I will close the public hearing on this matter, and, and we will continue in the public meeting to deliberate on the application before us. So, you know, again, it seems, seems like this is a good result for the city. You know, Mr. Hudson, I appreciate, appreciate you, the, obviously, the time and effort that you and your department have spent on this as well. And again, it sounds like it's a sort of joint and collaborative effort here. So I would be happy to have someone make a motion in favor of this.
All right. I'll give a crack at it.
All right. Mr. Green?
I'd like to take a motion to accept new business A24-0138 per the recommended actions in the staffing report to amend Condition 1 of September 23rd, 2024 approval. As noted in the staffing report, prior to the issuance of certificate of occupancy, the applicant shall have received final approval from the City of Nashua's Engineering Department of the Division of Public Works for Design and Reconstruction of Pheasant Lane slash Daniel Webster Highway Intersection, and shall post a financial security in the form of an approved, in a form approved by the City of Nashua, and in the amount approved by the Engineering Department for all improvements prior to December 31st, 2025, as well as all subsequent conditions from the approval on September 23rd, 2024.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Mr. Green to approve new business A24-0138 with the one condition that all subsequent, or all conditions from the prior approval on September 23rd, 2024 be incorporated. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that, Mr. Chair, but I have a question.
Sure.
I'm just questioning the date of the amendment. I think the original approval was September 7th, 2023?
Yes.
You're correct.
Yeah, you know, I read right over that and didn't revise that. That's actually a date in the future, so.
So if, if the maker of the motion would, would make that date change, then I would resecond my second.
I'll make an amendment to the motion where we are, the amendment to condition of September 2024 be changed to September 23rd, 2023.
September 7th.
September 7th, 2023.
Thank you. And so, Mr. Hudson, you can second that, revise the motion? Thank you. So with that motion by Mr. Green is amended, second by Mr. Hudson. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Okay. That motion passes unanimously. Welcome back, Mr. Chair. I think so. Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda, under new business subdivision plans, case A24-0151, property located at Five Morse Street and 6 and 10 Morse Avenue. Has any member of the board had an opportunity to review that application and is willing to make a motion for the board to accept jurisdiction?
I'll make that motion.
Alderman Klee, is there a second? Second, Mr. Green. All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Is anyone here this evening on behalf of the applicant? Please come right up to the podium, sir. Just state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Bobby Garen. The address of the location or?
Your domicile.
For Morse Ave.
Yep.
So I'm here, pardon me, I'm not a public speaker.
That's okay. And if you need to adjust the microphone, go right ahead. Don't worry about it.
I'll just lean in.
It's, it's a friendly, it's a friendly horseshoe. So take, take your time.
So I'm here for the application for the lot line relocation for some residential development. Ultimately, we're just looking to take the non-conforming lot lines and make them conforming lot lines, taking a little bit from the larger and giving to the smaller. Does anybody have any questions?
So I'm right that there's, there's obviously, there's two affected lots here, and I, I suspect that these are your neighbors who are also in the audience?
Potentially. I'm not the owner. I'm, I'm the applicant.
So I just wanted to, I just want to confirm that the sort of both involved parties are, are presumably in favor of?
Yes.
These changes? Other questions from the board? Mr. Hudson?
Not, again, not a question, Mr. Chair, but I would just kind of elaborate on some of the, some of the back and forth. The applicant's done a good job of trying to respond to staff comments, or engine, I should say, DPW engineering comments. We had a couple issues with how the sewer service was supposed to be tied in, sewer services were to be tied in. So that has been resolved. We also required sewer easement, just given the limited amount right of way, right of way out there, sewer easement to be established across two properties, across both properties on, on Morse Avenue. So they've incorporated that request in the latest change, in the latest plan. Scott had mentioned before the meeting, or at the beginning of the meeting, that there's some additional items from, comments from me. So those requests I made were just to allow some snow storage within that sewer easement I had mentioned along the frontages, just because the edge pavement is like close to the property line. And there wouldn't be a place to push snow off the road without encroaching on the property. And then second, we own the corner, the parcel corner actually juts out into the existing pavement. So I'm just seeking a little bit of a corner right-of-way dedication or, or an easement to that effect. So everything seems to be coming together. And with those modifications, I think, and DPW Engineering supports it. I think there are a couple of their comments still to address, but they've knocked off a bunch of them, and I'm sure we can get there for the rest.
I appreciate that. Mr. Hudson, very, very high level. Do you see anything there that's insurmountable, or do you think this is just a little, little more back and forth potentially to just get to the finish line?
Exactly. A little bit more back and forth. But like I said, significant progress has been made, and the major issues that we had with the original proposal have been addressed. So I think we're, we're in alignment and in good shape for moving forward with this.
All right. Very well. Thank you. Other questions from the board?
Just, just one.
Alderman Klee, please.
Thank you. I, I see, once again, this is one of those, the in lieu of, with, with sidewalks. I, I was looking at this. It would have been silly to have a sidewalk request put in to, to hear. This is one of those, those issues. When I was looking at it, I thought this is kind of a sidewalk that would go nowhere. So the, the in lieu of is, is just, so I, I appreciate that we're, we're doing the in lieu of, and, and you have no issues with that, correct? Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Other questions from the board?
I have a quick clarification.
Mr. Green, please.
To the applicant. The landscaping, I noticed the, were you cutting down those trees that weren't noted, or are they staying?
So we were looking to see if, whenever we get on site, if they're worth saving. If we can, we'd like to save them. If not, we're prepared to do whatever we need to do to the lot. Or we're ultimately looking to save the trees.
I have a question for staff. In the, the conditions that are noted, I think it says they need to get a, the land, it's surveyed. Will that include, after the final certificate of occupancy, the land will be surveyed as built with the, will landscaping plan be included in that as well?
It would include site landscaping, so it would be captured in that plan, yes.
Drainage, landscaping, we have a specific definition for the items.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions from the board?
Just in the staff conditions, I think it'd be good to add, add reference to the email that I had sent as well, in addition to two letters from Joe Mandola. I was trying to find a copy of that, but, so when we get to that, the condition, precedent conditions, A, we can modify it, add my email. That was, that was dated yesterday, so that.
September 17th?
September 18th.
Oh, 18th.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Questions from the board? Okay. Sir, thank you for, thank you.
Thank you.
So I'll open this up to the public now. Any member of the public wishing to speak in opposition or with concern? None?
I have a question about the trees again. The trees that are coming down.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. If you're gonna have to, yeah, it's just, otherwise, we won't be part of the record. So thank, thank you so much.
You have to say your name.
Rose Mazon, and I'm at Five Morse Ave, so I'm right across diagonal from this property. I was just wondering if the trees that are coming down, I know you don't know how many will come down yet, but is there any plan to maybe replace whatever you do, take down? Plant in like number? That was just my question. Thank you.
Okay. And he'll have an opportunity to, to respond to that. So thank you so much. Is, any other member of the public wishing to speak in opposition or concern? Is any member of the public that would like to speak in favor of the application?
No.
All right. You're sure, you're the only three here. So if you don't, it's your, it's your opportunity. So, oh, okay. All right. No worries. All right. If you wouldn't mind, sir, if you could just address the, the question that was asked, please?
So in regards to the, the vegetation on the land, on the lot, there's nothing that we had precedented saying that we're looking to do anything, but if the staff has, you know, recommendations or suggestions, or whatever the case might be, we're more than compliant to take care of what we need to.
Okay. Just a quick question for staff. There was a landscaping plan that was part of the package.
Correct. Yeah, there was. The, the crux of the, the issue is typically on existing conditions plans, much easier to do on a simple subdivision like this. Basically, any really prominent existing mature tree should be noted on the plan, identified, called out, because those can count towards your required tree counts. So it's advantageous for an applicant to do that, because then they may not have to plant any trees they can use that's existing on site. And, you know, having seen these trees, they're very nice, they're large, they're, they're well positioned. So in the absence of that information, then the presence of a landscaping plan that doesn't include those, we add. So, um, in the absence of that information, then the presence of a landscaping plan that doesn't include those, we had kind of an open question of whether or not these trees were going to be saved, and then it looked like they would have, were going to be placed with, I think, broadwood entrance or some other large shrub, so very different from a tree. So that was just kind of the open question that we had, um, but it sounds like they're gonna take a little look, um, when they are, you know, building permit phase, you know, pre-CEO, you know, are these trees, maybe saved? If so, you know, there's preservation methods that should occur during construction, um, and in the event that they're able to build and everything's fine, you know, we can assess and say that, okay, yeah, now these count towards the required tree count, and, you know, no further landscaping is needed.
Okay.
Yep.
But something that we're going to, it sounds like we're gonna monitor and communicate about as we go along.
Yeah, it's gonna change a little to be more emphasis on that.
Okay, and then whatever ultimately is there, to, to Mr. Green's question from earlier, that will show up in the.
In the as-built, yep.
Yeah, okay. All right. Any additional questions from the board? Okay. Thank you. Thank you. All right, I think we'll close the public hearing. This one seems fairly straightforward to, to me, um, pretty, pretty well thought through. It's, it's always really refreshing when, when Mr. Hudson can chime in and, and say, we're, you know, you're, you're working on some cleanup items, um, we've seen a few recently where we weren't quite there yet, so. I'm, I'm feeling fairly positive about this one, but obviously, I'd like to hear from other board members, um, see if they have any, see what your thoughts are. Alderman Klee?
Uh, thank you, I, I feel the same. The, the, uh, property owner came up and, and was very succinct as to what it was, but to have, um, Mr. Hudson to be able to say that, uh, they, they've been working through things, and the, uh, property owner was amenable to the changes and so on, and to have the, uh, three residents with only one question was also refreshing. I'm sure they were here to be able to hear what was going on, um, and I, and I hope that they did, um, speak to what their, because this is their time, um, to, to ask questions and concerns and, and so on, and, um, so I do hope that they did, they did speak, uh, with, with their worries or concerns, or, or positive reaction to it. But, um, I'm glad that, uh, Mr. Hudson was able to reassure us and, and so on, so I do feel good about this one.
All right, thank you, Alderman Klee. Other board members? All right, um, there's no further discussion on this one. Would somebody be willing to make a motion?
Mr. Chair?
Oh, yes.
If we could just modify, uh, condition I, under precedent conditions, by going to, uh, prior to the issuance of the building permit, all stormwater documents and sewer easement language, so be submitted for review by city staff.
So it's, all, all stormwater documents and sewer easement?
Yes, prior, prior to the issuance, so a certificate of occupancy, under subsequent conditions, all stormwater documents and sewer easements, easements shall be recorded at the applicant's expense as well. So we're just adding in the, in sewer easements to both of those.
So it needs to show up in precedent I and subsequent?
A.
A. Okay. All right. Thank you, Scott. And, okay, so we have those two potential modifications, but, and also before someone is willing to make a motion, um, we did have the, uh, discussion earlier about adding, uh, the email from Dan, uh, from yesterday, from nine eighteen, to precedent condition A. A lot to chew on, but if, uh, if anyone's willing to make a motion. Mr. Arden, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to make a motion to approve new business eight twenty-four dash zero one five one, uh, being a subdivision at six and ten Morse Avenue, five Morse Street. Finding that the, um, project does meet the, uh, subdivision criteria, and I'm going to start with, um, identifying four waivers that were requested by the applicant. The first being a waiver from section one ninety dash two eighty-two B nine, um, regarding showing, uh, existing conditions within a thousand feet, and that the motion be to grant that waiver request, finding that it would pose an unnecessary hardship, um, and not be contrary, contrary, granting would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation, um, and would further be within the spirit and intent of the regulations. The second waiver request is from section one ninety dash two twelve A one, regarding construction of a sidewalk, and the motion there would similarly be to grant that waiver, um, with the understanding that the applicant would make a contribution in lieu of such sidewalk construction, the amount of eight thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars pursuant to section one ninety dash two twelve D two, and further with the finding that the, um, requested waiver, uh, is, uh, is consistent with there being an unnecessary hardship with respect to construction of the sidewalks, uh, that the waiver would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations, and would carry out the spirit of the regulations. Waiver number three is from section one ninety dash one eighty-five, um, to waive certain aspects of the required landscaping plan, um, as specified in, in greater detail in the staff report, finding, again, that that waiver request, um, fulfills the, uh, requirement that there be an unnecessary hardship to the applicant, and that the waiver would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations, and consistent with the, uh, spirit and intent of the regulations. And then finally, waiver number four, from section one ninety dash two seventy-five A, with respect to, uh, the requirement to provide a lighting plan, that waiver again, uh, being granted with the finding that it, that conformity would require, would, uh, impose an unnecessary hardship, and that the waiver request would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations. And so, following the, uh, consideration of those four waivers, the motion would be to grant approval of the subdivision plan overall, uh, finding that it's consistent with the, uh, provisions of NRL section one ninety dash one thirty-eight G. With precedent conditions A through K, as written in the staff report, with, um, precedent condition A being amended to include reference to, uh, a letter from, uh, Dan Hudson dated September eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. Precedent condition I also being amended to, uh, add after all stormwater documents, the words sewer easements, and then, um, to include subsequent conditions A through C, with subsequent condition A being amended, um, also to add the words sewer easements after stormwater documents.
Thank you, Mr. Barley. Before I ask for a second on that, do, do we need to vote on the waivers first separately, or can this all be rolled into a single? I think, I think we've done it both ways, so I, I.
Yeah, I, I think the, the new procedure, and Sam can correct me if I'm wrong, but, is that he's asking that we, we do indeed take each waiver as a separate motion, is that?
Uh, yes, but your motion was so articulate, stating findings for every single motion, that if all members of the board are amenable, I think that in this instance, a single motion for all four waivers and conditional subdivision approval would be appropriate.
I will agree with, uh, Sam's use of the word eloquence, I didn't want to stop, yes, so. But, all right, um, sorry for the interruption, but there, there is, there is a motion by, by Mr. Barley, which would be, uh, all, all-inclusive, um, so is there a second on that motion? Second by Mr. Hirsch, is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda, review of tentative agenda for developments of, to determine developments of regional impact. Has any member of the board had an opportunity to, um, review the list of projects that we're presented with, and is willing to make a motion on, um, determinations for regional impact? Mr. Barley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, I have reviewed the tentative agenda, uh, dated September sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, and, um, would like to make a motion that, uh, with such review, there are no proposals of regional impact.
Uh, thank you, uh, motion by Mr. Barley, that there are no projects of regional impact? Is there a second? Second by Mr. Green? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Next item on the agenda, staff update on the land use code project. Mr. Durkey, the floor is yours.
Awesome. Dana, could I bother you to push the laptop button behind you? I hope that was the right one.
That was the laptop button. Do you have to push it in with the TVs? Should I push the hardening?
Oh, yeah, it does click. There you go. Yeah, she's gone. All right. Excellent. So, um, I think this presentation's been a long time coming. There's been some, some hiccups in the process, admittedly, um, when, when Linda left us, uh, left me in a bit of a lurch, uh, this was my primary focus, and, um, that got, my attention got diverted to, to work on other great things, like the Mohawk Tannery and, and other wonderful projects that you guys have so graciously approved recently. So, uh, Nashua Recode, that's the project's name, uh, it is a comprehensive update to our land use code, um, it's been going very well, um, you're gonna get kind of a, a high-level view, um, but we're also gonna have to get a little bit in the weeds, just because, um, this is like completely, like a, a major structural change of how we go about regulating land use. It's gonna sound like a lot, and it's gonna sound very different, but I'm hopeful that as we go through it, you'll kind of see how everything comes together, and I think in the end, this code's actually gonna be a lot more intuitive and more user-friendly, and will end up resulting in just a higher-quality-built environment, so, I know that's a high bar, but I'm hoping that we, uh, we get there. And I do have to say that, um, both our consultant, uh, principal group, has been absolutely stellar, they, they've just, I'm blown away with their knowledge and their professionalism, and their efficiency in how they approach these projects, um, I really can't speak highly enough of them, and I, I do have to thank, um, the state of New Hampshire, uh, through the, uh, HOP grant program, so it's a housing opportunities planning grant, um, they, they did award us with a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to supplement our budget, um, so we have really been able to throw a lot at this, and I think really bring the city the code that it needs and deserves. So, uh, with that, um, just kind of get into this, um, we've had some really incredible public input, uh, throughout the process, uh, these are images from Code Week, which was back in May, um, we had, we filled rooms in, in multiple venues, we were all over the city, uh, it was a lot of fun, and we heard a lot of great stuff, a lot of interesting things, um, and this is, you know, that was kind of the last public venture we've done, we turned internally and just like went into full-on production mode, so what you're gonna see tonight is really, um, the, the culmination of all of that, so, um, you know, high-level goal here, uh, the master plan basically establishes the vision, and the land use code manifests that vision, regulations. So to hit some high points, these were some of the, the key, uh, goals in the master plan, um, just as kind of a reminder, you know, reflecting how, how the code may interact with these goals, um, and these were some of the, the redevelopment priority areas identified, uh, in the land use code, and this helped to form the basis and some of the strategies around, you know, how we treat these areas, uh, in the code, um, and just as like a little bit of a teaser, um, you know, this is sort of the, uh, the things that we're trying to inspire, uh, through, through the regulations, and really develop, um, you know, sense of place in different areas, kind of show what's possible, but all while being very context-sensitive, and at the same time, thinking creatively about ways that we can develop smartly, but also work in, um, you know, public amenities, in this case, this is an example of, of introducing housing while also providing parking, but you would not recognize that that's necessarily a parking garage. There are ways to make buildings pretty with parking garages. So, uh, zoning, right, this, this whole thing is about zoning, and really, the idea is to produce predictable built environment, um, with quality architecture that really results in places where people want to be, you know, that's gonna help values go up, it's gonna help businesses be successful, and it's gonna help Nashua be competitive and attractive to people, businesses, and really help us thrive. So getting into how the code works, it's really broken down into a number of things, one of which is the district standards, so we're pretty familiar with this concept, you know, how does a structure relate to the lot, and how does that lot relate to the street? So looking at this, you have kind of a, an area which the building will sit in, perspective of side, front, rear setbacks, um, building massing, you know, this is very basic cottage-style, you know, you have your, your standards kind of on the side there, but this, and these code sheets will have images, they'll be a little pictorial, and you'll be able to see kind of an idea of what's being proposed. So, we have those standards, we also have massing standards for various components getting into architecture, you know, here we have a, a side wing on a cottage, and, you know, those need to have massing standards so that they, they work with the architecture of the main structure. Then we get a little further into architectural component standards, you know, every building, to make it interesting, has porches, you know, but also, you know, to make it livable, there's all sorts of these other additional things that can be tacked onto buildings, and we call these building components in the code, and those have their own standards to them. Also, not uncommon are accessory structures, accessory uses, those need to be located appropriately on the lot, in, you know, in context with the neighborhood and keeping in character. So, all of this, it's, it's kind of like, like nesting dolls in a way, you know, it, it nests down from the, the lot in the building through massing, architecture, accessory standards and uses, but it also nests upwards from the building, the lot, to the street, to the neighborhood, to the district, and the setting of, of where this place is in the city. So thinking of it in that structure, hopefully sounds a little bit more intuitive, and you'll kind of see how that thread is common throughout the entire code. So, um, again, going back to these priority areas, um, that were identified in the master plan, um, these, these really have been specifically targeted, um, with some more creative ways of, of approaching zoning, we've kind of broadened those to these general areas in, in the darker green, um, where we're gonna see pretty significant zoning changes. These are really the areas where we expect to see, um, housing growth, um, while also concentrating some of the more commercial industrial, we target specific industrial and commercial uses, um, you know, recognizing kind of certain economic trends and, and demands for certain types of spaces, locations for those spaces, buildings, and the like. But then you'll see in the lighter green, um, these are areas that we're, we're not really doing a whole lot of, uh, in terms of zoning changes, really, these areas are just gonna see the code cleaned up, um, kind of unified, so it's more user-friendly, uh, and, and just, again, making that predictable built environment, uh, that's context-sensitive, uh, to the area that it's in, um, but not fundamentally changing the underlying uses, densities, or residential forms in these areas. So with districts, you also get building types, and with this code format, building types really are, you know, the basic foundation of, of a form-based code, which this really, really is. So, kind of a, a little bit of a primer there, but basically, the idea is that just about any kid in, in New England could draw a house, or a shop, maybe an apartment building, but the idea is that, you know, there, there's this inherent idea of what these buildings should look like. And, um, the problem is, is that our code right now, in regards to form, is a bit like Play-Doh, because it's really malleable, sure, you can, you can build a house out of Play-Doh and be, you know, fairly successful, but you can also build a dinosaur. You know, it's just, it's just so. but you can also build a dinosaur. You know, it's just, it's just so malleable, you can get anything. And the problem with that is that as places continue to develop and redevelop without any concrete form standards, you lose that tradition, that built form, that what really defines the neighborhoods gets lost because there's no guiding regulations to help that form perpetuate and really preserve it. So, we're really trying to look more at like Lego blocks. Sure, you can still build things with them, but there's, we've stacked these into kind of built forms and understandable concepts that, you know, they work together in a system. So, to help define what those blocks are, Principal has done a ton of measuring throughout the city. You know, boots on the ground, really get an understanding. What I like to refer this as is quantifying the qualitative look and feel of neighborhoods, houses. Like, how do you, you know, I know I like that, I can't tell you why. Well, let's go out and measure it and find out exactly what its dimensions are. Put that into a code sheet and now you can replicate that. But we also have building components and we can modify it, so it's not just the same thing all the time. But everything's gonna be cohesive so that the feel is still the same, but it's still different. It's still interesting. There's variance. So, this is kind of the groundwork that's gone into helping to understand what makes Nashua Nashua. And we have to capture those things so that we can keep doing it, basically. So, all of these Nashua patterns are being embedded into these building types so that we basically have like a palette of predictable pieces, the Lego pieces, that come together to create the streets and the neighborhoods that are so Nashua and will remain Nashua. So, some of these building types are clearly defined, they're iconic, like the triple-decker, which has a very recognizable architecture, relationship to the lot and the street. This is the code sheet for the triplex. You know, it breaks down into building massing. You see that envelope on the left-hand side and that talks about, you know, relationship to the lot, setbacks, you know, typical zoning stuff. But then we have more detailed standards regarding architecture. Again, so that the result is predictable and is in context with the surrounding area. Something like a townhouse, very similar in the sense that it has a recognizable form and it can be defined. You just have to do that with specific standards. A multiplex, you know, little bit larger, maybe, you know, more of that multifamily feel, but it's still somewhat at the house scale. How is that different from a duplex, triplex versus an apartment house? These things, there are nuances between these building types that we are quantifying and writing into the code. But you're starting to get a sense of how these code sheets kind of work and capture the building types that are prolific throughout Nashua and are really indicative of the character. So, small apartment house, another step up from that multiplex, but we have standards for that too. Now we get a little bit more interesting in the general building. Much more use agnostic, typically having storefronts or commercial on the first floor, variety of uses above, be it office, residential and institutional. Much more form-focused. These are landmark buildings and the use doesn't matter as much. You're not gonna put an asphalt plant in one of these buildings, but when it comes to retail, it's retail. It doesn't matter if it's a flower shop, a camera shop, you know, a bakery. It's really about the form in creating that successful place and that look and feel. Again, we have standards for that too. Much like any other New England city that was built along the river and had an industrial past, we have mill buildings. Right now, under our current code, you could not build another mill building. But it's such an iconic piece of architecture that we wanna bring those mill buildings, one, into compliance with the code so that they're not, you know, legal nonconformities, but also just respecting that unique structure. And, you know, there are instances in the city where the perpetuation of these building types or the expansion of existing would be appropriate. So, we're coding for that as well. So, you get a general's idea of how these building types function. Building types are grouped together to form districts. Districts are really being measured based on what is currently on the ground. But again, we do, we have standards for the building components that add visual interest to houses, be they cross gables, penthouses, shed dormers, all sorts of fun stuff, side wings, rear wings, breeze waves, porticos. We've got it all because predictability in built form, making sure that it's of high-quality architecture. So, again, all these building forms, these building types come together to make districts. So, this is West Pearl Street, looking to the east towards Main Street. And here you get a sense of what we would call a mid-rise four district because you have buildings that go up four stories in this district. And you can see a variety of building types in this district that make it successful, that make it dynamic, that make the street interesting and a nice place to walk down. You've got all sorts of stuff. You can see those on the side there. But yeah, so you're kind of trying to understand, how do these building types come together to create, you know, a general vibe of an area and why is that good? And how can we keep that going and redevelop without ruining that area, that neighborhood? Here's an example of, this is Amherst Street, very close to the Main Street intersection, but looking towards the Everett. This actually is a district boundary in the new code where you have urban residential on the left-hand side and neighborhood residential on the right-hand side. And the urban residential's a slightly more intense district than the neighborhood residential. But you see that in the fact that there's a small apartment building closest to the view, an apartment house, shop house, but then on the neighborhood residential side, you have a townhouse, a multiplex and a house that has a rear wing that may host an ADU and you also have the fire station. And it's just these mix of uses that and these building types that come together to help define the character of a district. So, again, pulling together the building types that are based on Nashua's patterns and putting them into districts that are all based on common character. So, next comes mapping the districts. And I wanna use Janatz off of Manchester and Corderlin as kind of a focal point for this discussion because this is a historical location and when you think about why that is, you really have to look around the neighborhood. So, this, Janatz is that dot right in the middle and there is a ring around. It might not show up too well on those monitors, but basically, we mapped out these roughly five-minute walking radius from what have appeared to be traditional neighborhood centers. This is particularly prominent in some of the older, more historic areas of the city. These street grids likely developed pre-automobile and these areas are inherently more walkable. A five-minute walk is about what, you know, a typical person will tolerate to say, get a carton of eggs at a local corner store. But whether it's to go to the park, which is right to the southeast, go to school, go to the corner store, visit friends up the street, that five-minute walking radius, or as we're calling it, like a pedestrian shed, really begins to build that framework and define a neighborhood pattern. And we are using that, you know, basically as a, as a traditional urbanism sort of pattern to help define the basis for the mapping of these districts. Unfortunately, our current code does not do a good job of recognizing that traditional pattern of, you know, that traditional urbanism. With the new code, we're getting much more granular and we're recognizing that older, traditional, historic neighborhoods that are throughout Nashua. Here you can see that orange is a, an urban residential area centered around the corner, adjacent to the park with less dense and changing residential patterns as you radiate out from that. So, with the neighborhood center approach and understanding the neighborhood pattern has informed the mapping of these districts. And so, we looked across the city and we found, especially in the, in the old center of Nashua, where naturally occurring neighborhood centers already exist and using that as a basis for mapping these areas. But then we're also looking, you know, where can this be perpetuated? You know, looking at the DW and the Amherst Street corridors, there are redevelopment opportunities where you can introduce these more walkable, what would be considered traditional urbanist ideas and patterns behind that primary artery to enliven those spaces, make them more productive and actually create places with a capital P where people actually wanna be and that then regains more investment in business, quality architecture and, you know, a rising tide lifts all ships. So, here's, here's our existing zoning map. Fairly big districts, I think is a thing to point out, which just does not do a very good job of honoring that underlying neighborhood structure. But when we keep that in the forefront of our mind, a much more fine-grained picture appears. So, this is the base zoning in the current code, or in the code that we're proposing in its current form. So, this approach reflects the realities on the ground, the characteristics of the lots, the streets, the districts that are clearly defined by the buildings that are present in the area. So, this is what a district sheet looks like. It kind of draws a little picture of what the district may look like, but it includes, includes your district standards, your lot area, your dimensions, setbacks, things like that. But it also then has a collection of building types that are permitted and those building types, those allowed building types are informed by what's already there. So, again, you're perpetuating the character and that character is defined by the building type standards so that anything that is built kind of follows suit and it doesn't degrade the character of those neighborhoods. But form, in a form-based code, is obviously the focus, but use is still incredibly important as we have come to know, definitely as that is a major focus of this board. So, we, we really need to take a look at our use table. We wanna make that more user-friendly and we wanna simplify. But we also really wanna view it as subservient to the form and I'll get into why that's important. So, building form, never mind the AI-generated image, that's very quaint, but really just for discussion purposes. So, most codes, and our current code indeed, is far more concentrated on regulating uses than the building form. So, going back to that Play-Doh example, the code elevates the architecture so that the building form is of higher quality and is more predictable, but at the same time regulates uses in a way that is context-sensitive at the block level, the neighborhood level and so on and so forth. So, here you have a charming house in a relatively dense neighborhood, but now it's a gelato shop just because there's a sign out front. If you saw that, there's a slight change in the sign. So, the idea is that you have good architecture, form is really important. Is it really that big of a deal if there's a gelato shop on the first floor? I mean, arguably not. And in a neighborhood like this, you know, a fairly light retail establishment like that is a benefit to the community. So, this is really to demonstrate the fact that building use is much more interesting and it's far more malleable than form. I wanna be clear about that, that use flows, you know. Larry, I know you know, you have commercial tenant turnover. It's not always the same use, but the building form is the same. You can have the same building, but you have different uses churning. So, use is more malleable than form and it becomes more interesting when that use follows the form rather than the other way around. Yeah, especially when new buildings are created. So, when we look at the use table updates, we need to remove the building types because our use table actually has, without really recognizing it, it's defining uses as building types or vice versa. So, here, if you can't read it, you know, office buildings over storefronts. That's a, that's a building type. That's a general building because you have that commercial on the first floor, but then you have office or maybe some other uses. Maybe it's residential or institutional. So, we're pulling out the building types from the use table. We're striking down some of those because, just to clean up that use table. But we're also consolidating like uses into, you know, broader categories. So, right here you see bicycle sales and repair, books, magazine, music, camera and photographic supplies, candy confectionery making and florist. So, these are all fairly similar and they're various retail goods, you know, retail sales of consumer goods, so why not just call them that? So, we're simplifying that because I don't think it's really important that we regulate so finely between like uses. So, the other side of this is density. And this is important because that gets to the intensity of uses, intensity of districts. So, the first table, the first page of the use table has various residential uses, single-family, duplex, multifamily, manufactured homes. And those are all gonna be regulated by our building types. So, density comes in and it's also going to be regulated by those building types because those buildings are going to have standards. Those building types are regulated by the lot standards. You can fit, you can only fit a certain size building on a lot. The lot is like the regulating, that creates the box in which you can build. So, when you lead with form, you know, what ends up happening is that the form is still, you know, the characteristics of the street kind of fits into the neighborhood. But in this case, this house could just be one house. But maybe it's a duplex or maybe it's a triplex or maybe it's a multiplex with six units. Yet the form is inherently the same, so that's where density comes into play. Density has become less associated with use and it's far more dependent on the building type and the characteristics of the setting, the district that the building is in and as it aligns with the city's goals for housing production. But getting into housing production, this is where those target areas of development from the master plan really come into play. This is where the code, I think, really begins to shine. So, we've identified, you know, four types of areas, those being the downtown area, downtown east, infill and suburban retrofit. So, here we have the downtown in that magenta color. It's the most intense part of the city from a use diversity and density standpoint. Lots of complicated, integrated buildings and blocks. In yellow, we have downtown east. So, this is the East Hollis Temple Street TOD area. It's not just focused on setting itself up for a future commuter rail station. It serves as the connection between downtown and the river, between the neighborhoods to the north and the south. It's really a pivotal area of the city that's been kind of glossed over for Main Street, for Daniel Webster Highway, for Amherst Street. There's a lot of opportunity in this area and we need to craft specific standards for this area in particular. So, we also have these infill areas that are in violet. These are the older neighborhoods where the street grid primarily developed pre-1950s, inherently more walkable just based on the structure, therefore have very different characteristics that demand tailored standards for how they should develop and interact with the existing neighborhoods. Those make up the real core of the city, as you can see. And then on the edges in teal and a little bit down South Main Street, we have more auto-oriented, commercial-dominated areas in the city that have the potential to become even more productive through intentional retrofit with the introduction of walkable mixed-use development, which has a whole nother set of criteria associated with it. So, setting up those, those major areas for redevelopment, we break them out into specific overlay districts. Basically, if someone wants to develop in one of these target areas, they can opt in and utilize the overlay to unlock more intense building types, subject to requirements, but effectively upzone their lot. So, looking at the downtown area, this is the base zoning. So, again, when you look at that, I mean, we're almost zoning on a parcel by parcel. So again, when you look at that, I mean, we're almost zoning on a parcel-by-parcel, block-by-block basis because this is just crafted in a way to reflect what is there. Anytime that you're gonna really intentionally do a comprehensive update like this, the goal is to come away with next to no non-informities. Everything is there because it was built that way as it was appropriate for the time in which it was being built. So we're honoring those traditional patterns of Nashua, crafting a base zoning map that respects those and allows those to perpetuate. But in these areas that we've targeted for redevelopment, we want it to occur in a context-sensitive way. That's where we begin to utilize these these overlay areas. So we start to envision, um, what would be appropriate for these given areas from the standpoint of intensity, use, building form and and overall density, see how it fits into the larger context of the neighborhood and its relative setting in the city. Uh, so much more intense along Main Street, uh, as you can see there. Some of that pattern already exists and given its greater development potential as a highly productive part of the city and its relationship to the adjacent areas, um, the overlays essentially they give a nod to existing conditions uh, while acting as, uh, future land use maps in a way. So how this would work out, you know, basically we establish our existing conditions that is becomes the the base district. If you want to develop with the base districts, great, carry on, go forth. You're gonna kind of just be perpetuating what's already there. Now we're talking about development with the overlay districts. So, okay, great, yeah, you you want to opt in, you want to build bigger, more intense, wonderful. This is where inclusionary zoning, affordable housing and other incentives, um, come into play that help to meet some of the city's other goals. So it helps to to get back and and really, um, allow for the, not only the the better architecture, but creating a a place again in a way, um, that that benefits the the broader area. Then we also, um, talk about developing in an overlay with a master plan. So think about, say, um, so Maynard Homes recent recently came before us. This is larger development, um, multiple buildings phased. As we saw in that plan set, there were areas for for designated open space. This image is a bit more like downtown core focused where you have, you know, real blocks that are all interconnected. You know, if if these areas start redeveloping, they're going to have to redevelop at a more dense level in order for the return on just like the cost of the 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 land value. It has to be at a higher, uh, return at a higher density. Great, do that through the overlay, you're gonna be providing affordable housing. We're gonna have standards for the creation of new open space in the area. And we're gonna be having conversations about, um, you know, shared parking and and, you know, that that sort of transportation demand management strategies, um, so that we're not overburdening infrastructure in these areas, but we're also, uh, creating a, you know, a better place to be in in the downtown core. So kind of threw a lot at you there. We do have a website where we have a whole bunch of fun stuff and you can click through a bunch of things. But basically, we're, we're targeting October, uh, to roll out a first draft to the public, uh, after which we're gonna be holding a series of open house events, um, really to get some some input. And then, uh, we'll kind of go into production for nearing that that final draft and we'll kind of begin the the adoption process, which is gonna be lengthy. You know, lots of meetings, going to lots of committees, a lot of automatic exposure. But yeah, hopefully we'll have a new code sometime next year. But, uh, happy, happy to take questions and shoot back to any slides. But yeah, that's, there's a lot.
Sam, so are you going to be basically taking control of the architectural design of buildings as opposed to right now, as I understand it, is, you know, zoning is a little more basic, I guess, in terms of, you know, the the size of the buildings, setbacks and whatever else. Now it sounds like you're getting really into the details of the actual developments, uh, in, like, single-family houses, for example, or multis, that type of thing.
Sort of, sort of. So we aren't necessarily telling, so if someone wants to build a a ranch, great, you can build a ranch. Here are the standards to build a nice ranch. You want to build a porch on it, great, here are the standards to build a porch. We're not, we're not telling them what they can or can't do, but if they want to do a certain thing, well, here's how you do it.
Well, you're controlling it then, basically.
To to a degree, but what we're giving them, like, the, it's it's free choice to do what they want, but then we're providing the standards of how how to do that. Because there are built forms, we're kind of putting them in the box of be respectful of traditional patterns and and built form in the city and in doing so, here are the standards by which to do that.
So if I want to build a sixty thousand square foot office building on two acres of land, for example, you're gonna actually get into dictating the facade of the building, the windows, uh, and all that, uh, more, much more than you are right now, as I understand it.
Yes.
So all of a sudden, you guys are taking control of a lot more of the the costs, a lot more of the, uh, the structure of the of the buildings, of the whole econo- economic structure, I guess is what I'm trying to say. So essentially, you could almost by increasing the cost of these things, uh, diminish the potential for the for development.
So I would, I'd actually approach that from a different angle, right? So we're, we're, we're providing standards for development and architect looks at that and says, my building is halfway already designed. So in terms of, we're, we're trying to accomplish a couple of things here. And and I will, and I want to be very specific in when I say that as we employ, uh, deploy form regulations, the the most, um, intense or stringent, if you will, are going to be in these core redevelopment areas. Places, um, like, like, uh, just kind of outside, and and I'm being sensitive to to the type of building that we're, we're talking about in your scenario, where where the the form of that is far less, we have less interest in regulating that as opposed to like the redevelopment of the Oddfellows Building on Main Street. Because the impact of of the Oddfellows Building is much greater on the surrounding area than, say, a a warehouse on Simon Street.
All right, but if I want to do a, uh, my office building on Amherst Street, for example, and I would decide I want to have an exterior which is drive it as opposed to a more, more, more expensive, more, you know, pro- more attractive product, but my choice, I won't be able to do that necessarily.
Not necessarily.
So you won't, you aren't going to be controlling that and the window, the windows and everything else?
I mean, we have architectural standards now.
Right.
It's not as if you can just do whatever you want.
I understand.
I mean, I think.
It's at least, it's tightening up quite a bit, though.
Yeah, right, but it, it sounds like what, it's, it's maybe applying more consistent standards? Is that like, as you say, tracking the standard with the form?
In a way.
Rather than the zone?
In these standards, it's not, here's what the standard is. No, it's, here are the standards, there's a range. I mean, there might be an instance where a a commercial building in a certain location, it wants to have, you know, its entire five hundred foot long facade is a blank wall and it's adjacent to a residential area. No, you don't get to do that. Sorry, but you have residential neighbors and you need to be a good steward of of the neighborhood. And yes, you need to provide some windows at a certain rhythm. And so, yes, there are going to be some architectural standards because it's for the betterment of the area, but that's not going to be the case absolutely everywhere. It's really gonna be contact-sensitive and this, again, is really just kind of a a broad overview. And as we get finer details, really coming out of that public process, and and I really do want to speak with a lot of those people who are much more in the in the commercial industrial side of things because those standards are gonna be far more lax than, again, the 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 more sensitive buildings uh, in in the downtown core, as an example.
I have a question about tying to the master plan. I'm, I'm thinking of some examples we've had, like, over the last year in the Amherst Street corridor, where the vision of the master plan, you know, was to create a more sort of walkable pedestrian-friendly space. And one of the things to talk about, uh, just as a specific, you know, like site plan standard, is moving the buildings up close to the street, putting the park behind. And, you know, there were a couple instances where we had redevelopment proposals where they were sort of like, well, you know, we did the best we could and it's like you guys don't have the zoning ordinance that requires something different than that. So how much are we affirmatively building in some of those redevelopment areas or or sort of corridor-specific zoning standards that are gonna say, no, no, the zoning requirement is you have to, you have to bring the building forward within, you know, X speed of the frontage?
Yeah, yeah, no, very good point. So in regards to the the Amherst Street corridor in particular, so again, we have our base zoning, which, yes, you can, you can carry on and allow, you know, you can just kind of do business as usual. And and Larry, I think this gets to your question as well. Or you can opt into the overlay where there's going to be a lot of incentive to do that for for either dimensional relief or or all these other, you know, reasons, like. So I want to be clear that we've partnered with with RKG, who did the housing study, um, they did a lot of modeling for us. We are stress-testing various development proposals to see if they're buildable under this code and what sort of incentives need to be employed to get people to opt into the overlay and to, yes, subject themselves to higher architectural standards. But in exchange for what and where is that that line? So we're, we're not trying to be overly burdensome without giving something of equal or greater value in return. So Adam, to to your point, um, two ways to answer that, one of which is is the overlays. You want to do the overlays, yeah, you're gonna, you're gonna be much more subject to to the master plan vision. The other side of that, you know, there is ongoing conversations about doing really in-depth corridor studies about how we can do that. The big question, something that, uh, Engineer Hudson raises frequently, is utilities, especially in these major commercial corridors. Is it even feasible to bring, you know, buildings right up to Amherst Street? Chances are probably not, but then what fills that space between the buildings and the street? And then when we talk about, you know, creating that more walkable street network, that's behind the main artery. You're, you're, that's the infill, that's the redevelopment that whether it's, you know, you know, sixty thousand square foot commercial buildings or mixed-use, six-story, you know, apartments, you know, there's, there's a street grid and standards for that, that, you know, s- private to semi-private to semi-public, to public space and that interaction in that area to help, you know, improve, improve the area, uh, in in the, in the relationship between the buildings and uses and and that, you know, infrastructure that everyone's gonna use.
I, I just want to make a couple of comments. I grew up with with, um, mom and pop stores in the neighborhoods, they're wonderful. I also grew up where we walked, to everything, we walked to school, we walked to the mom and pop stores. Janatz is in my neighborhood and I can tell you that, um, where Janatz is, there's a lot of parking. People don't park there. They park on the streets alongside and aggravate the crap out of the neighbors. And they park illegally and they go in and they get their sandwiches because they've got wonderful sandwiches and they've got great meats and and so on. So it's frustrating for people. So when you see a gelato store and and so on, the neighbors are gonna walk there. But if someone, if it catches on, people are gonna drive there and aggravate crap out of the neighbors. Just, just saying this, I also have other little things within my, my ward that aggravate the neighbors and so on. So when you say, oh, you, you can just pop this in there, we also have to be mindful and that's obviously with zoning and and so on. But we have to be mindful when we just say, we can just pop this in there. So if we become too lax with our zoning, this does affect neighbors. So I want us to be mindful when we create this type of of zoning. I understand the need for it, I understand the wanting of being able to make it easier. But if we become too lax, we're going to create havoc for for something like that. Janatz is wonderful, I don't ever want to see it leave, don't ever touch it, but this is a real thing. There's lots of parking across the street, but people don't park there. They park on the same side of Janatz. And they all line up and they park on the corner where they shouldn't park because they're just gonna go in and get their sandwiches and and they line up. So that's just, that's just an issue and we, as you know, I have other businesses in Ward Three that that cr- that create some other issues. And and the more density that we have, when you showed that one of those six buildings, depending upon where they are, I saw no parking for those kind of things. So that's also something that we have to be mindful. And I know I harangue about that all the time and so on. And while I would love to see we become a society of just walking and so on, we do have to be mindful that people still drive. People work in Massachusetts, we don't have commuter rail. So we do have to still be mindful of parking and cars and and we live in a society and maybe something like that is not going to have high school kids or kids that need to be to be bussed and and so on. But I do think we still need to be mindful when we're creating, we're creating things, things like this and and so on. I think all of these things are wonderful, I don't want to poo-poo them. I've been to enough of those meetings, they were just that. And also, I don't want to create another domain. For, so when we talk about the TODs and we talk about Amherst Street and we talk about these buildings that are coming up, I'm thinking of these single homes that that are already existing there. And we talk about putting these buildings there, I don't want to, for those people that are already living there, I don't want to create another Domain Ave. And I don't want to create things like that. So when we're putting in these and redoing all these zones, I want to think of the people that are living there already. And I want to make sure that we're protecting them. So it's wonderful that we're doing all this, but I want to think that we make sure we protect all those people that are there as well. So let's move forward, let's do all this, but let's make sure we have some kind of protections in there, all the people that are there too.
You'll get a chance to see like a blown-up version of, um, the base zoning map and you'll see how granular we've gotten.
Okay, great.
And a lot of these issues, like domain and others, that have come up recently. Principal's aware of those and we recognize the real challenges. You know, obviously, I think that the asphalt plant and and the transition of that area was probably like the the most stark, um, in terms of, you know, uses that can't really coexist next to each other. But, you know, this highlights the need to to really nail down that that base and then understanding the relationship between, you know, that single-family residential and the 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 warehouse expansion that's going in across the street. And that's why the standards are so important, particularly in those areas that that have that friction of uses adjacent to each other. You know, it it can be achieved, you know, for, you know, the unfortunate fact that it it already exists. But, you know, we want to, we do want to be mindful and we do want to make sure that, yeah, impact and expansion, we want to respect everyone's property rights, their ability to to continue and build and grow, but also property value for those people, that these are their homes and 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 they're here for the long haul. You know, how do you balance those when they're right across the street from each other?
Right.
That's where the standards come in.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Sam, thank you for the, uh, the overview. Interested to see how it turns out, so.
Me too.
I've got a quick one.
Oh, certainly, yeah.
The overlay, so is that gonna be administered like the one we saw, I think it was our last meeting, it might have been the meeting before, where it comes to the planning board as option to go to zoning or planning? How, how is that?
Yeah, so that's, that's a really good question. So we're, we're still working on the administration section of the code because this is, this is where the rubber meets the road in a way. So it, I hate to say that it depends, but it, but it does. And and primarily, um, you know, I hope that there was kind of a come-away from from the overlay conversation that, you know, yes, you can opt in and and that's it, the overlay is optional. But in doing so, you know, the city's benefiting, um, but then the the developer is also benefiting through access density or or something like that. But in in terms of, um, you know, how that happens, for for something like this, like, there is, there is a master plan review and approval process. So for the the larger, more impactful developments, parking, where's the, I mean, that, that's going to have a garage in it. There's, there's no question about it. That's the only way that a development of that size can be successful in a, in a car-dependent city like Nashua. But, uh, you know, it's got the, it's got the open space as well. So how we, how we review those? So, how we review those sorts of things? And we, a big part of this is, we want to keep the approval process as simple and as seamless as possible. Part of that is very clear standards so that, you know, things are predictable, not only for the city and, you know, the end user, that the product is predictable, the process is also predictable. I meet the standards, great, I shouldn't have any trouble at the planning board level. So, we really want the code to be user-friendly, not only from staff's perspective in terms of how we administer it or the board's perspective of how you review projects, but also really easy from an applicant and a developer's perspective of, I know what the standards are, I know what I'm allowed to do, off we go. But, yes, from a larger development standpoint, this master planning element, that's going to be really interesting in terms of how we make that easy, but we also make it predictable.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, Sam, thanks again, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Sam.
Well?
Unrelated to the subject, you would have never let Linda handle the tannery. That was yours.
All right, well, I think we're at the point in the meeting where we'd be looking for a motion to adjourn if, oh.
All right, alter and cleat. I'll make that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, have a great evening. We are adjourned at eight thirty-two.